To the Senate, in the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the Delator Allen property in Smithfield.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Alright. Anybody here with public comment on the property located in Smithfield? Allen Delator? Nobody? Okay. Essentially, I think we're in a position to do a... Well, you wanted to give an overview on it, so...
Yeah.
Right, right? If you could do that for us, appreciate it.
The project has been through major site plan review. It's a single-family residential development at 344 Smithville Valley Road. The property that was formerly the Hammond Dairy Farm. It will have... It currently has a guest house on the property that's been built. And the proposed development includes a 7,000 square foot, single-family home, a pool, a poolhouse, a storage shed, and a recreation barn. There are quite a lot of interesting natural features on the site. There's a stream that runs through the property that is part of... It's governed by Army Corps of Engineers. As a wetland, Smithville Valley Road actually bisects the property. And the portion to the west, which is mostly farm fields and wetland area, is going to... The area that is currently farmed will remain farmed. And then on the east side of Smithville Valley Road, there's a significant slope up to a ridge line beyond the property boundaries. And the east side of Smithville Valley Road, in the lower areas, there's a couple of existing farm fields that will remain propped. In order to build this project, there will be a new bridge over the existing stream crossing, which is currently a very low, shallow culvert. And the owners of the property are looking to make just, you know, improvements to the kind of natural habitat and enjoy it. Just basic, single-family residential built. There is a portion of the development that's in the senior protection overlay district. And we've been working with the board and the board's consultants to ensure that we are as respectful as possible to the Dutchess County Rural Siting Planning Guidelines, to existing natural conditions. And, you know, we are requesting a waiver from some of that senior protection overlay district in order to minimize building in steep slopes and minimize building in existing open fields.
Okay. Now, we got a memo in today from Julie, the engineer?
Yep.
Did you see that yet, or...?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you foresee any problems getting completed with what's...
Nope, no problems at all. She had a question there about the dry pipe and whether...
Right.
We checked with the wetland consultant and the amount of... We're allowed a certain amount of cut and fill under a threshold by the existing nationwide permit that we have. And that work would be so minimal, it doesn't get into the amount that we're allowed. So it's fine. And that's, you know, for a standpipe. It's a very, very minimal intervention. And then most of her comments are related to the full SWIP, which she recently only... She only recently received a copy of the full SWIP. It's a very large document. We were expecting a few of her comments back, and we will absolutely address all of those.
Any questions for anyone on the board?
The activity barn, is that... What kind of activities? Is it for horses, or is it like...
No, it's for humans to play around in in the wintertime.
Tennis court or something?
No, it's not that big. It's probably just big... There'll be a kind of large indoor gym that's maybe just big enough to shoot a hoop or a basketball.
It needs a three-point outline of the basketball court.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There'll be some storage for, you know, kind of outdoor rec equipment. And then there's a little area for weight machines and gym type.
It's like a gymnasium?
It's like a gymnasium. It's for their kids to have someplace to play when it's wintertime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, people that came in after the start of the meeting, anybody here may comment on the Allen Delator property? No? Anybody else on the board?
No.
No questions? Alright, what I need at this point, I guess, is a motion to approve the application, but be contingent upon addressing the issue that the town engineers brought up. And then at that point, I can sign off on it and it'll be all set.
Okay.
Can I get that motion from someone?
I'm sorry, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll call.
Chairman Bucking?
Yes.
Bill Prober?
I'm sorry, I have to read the resolution.
Yeah, but I just wanted to just motion.
Yeah, if you can go ahead and do that right now.
Now, therefore, it be resolved that in accordance to Section 121-65 of the Town Zoning Code, the planning board hereby approves the site plans for the project prepared by Deborah Bird Partners dated March 6, 2004, revised on the 30th, 2014, and July 10, 2015, subject to the following conditions. Prior to commencing work on the site, the applicant shall address the comments from the planning board's engineer in her review memo dated August 7, 2014, to the satisfaction of the engineer and the planning board. Two, prior to issuance of CO for the house, the applicant shall provide the final Dutchess County Health Department approvals, permits for the project's well and septic systems. Three, prior to the issuance of a CO for the house, the applicant shall provide a copy of the recorded deed commonant for the permanent stormwater controls on the site as required by the Bureau of State D.C., S.P.D.E.S., general permit for stormwater discharges for construction activity, GP-0-10-001. Four, prior to the issuance of a CO for the house, the applicant shall provide as-built plans for all improvements on the site as required by Section 121-68 of the zoning code. And five, applicant shall pay all the outstanding invoices for the planning board's consultants prior to the stamping and signing of the site plans by the planning board chairman and prior to issuance of the building permit by the building inspector. To be in further resolved, the planning board hereby grants the applicant the waiver of the SPO clearing limitations set forth in Section 121-14.1 L of the zoning code. And to be in further resolved, that in support of its approval, the planning board issues the findings noted above, as well as those collective findings attached heretofore, demonstrating that the project complied with the SPO requirements set forth in Section 121-14.1 of the zoning code and the steep slope regulations set forth in Section 121-36 of the zoning code. And to be in further resolved, that the planning board hereby authorizes the planning board chairperson to stamp and sign the site plans upon the applicant's compliance with all applicable conditions, if any. And to be in further resolved, that in accordance with Section 121-68E of the Town Zoning Code, one, this site plan approval shall expire if the applicant fails to commence construction to obtain the necessary building permits, or fails to comply with the conditions of the site plan approval within 18 months of its issuance. The planning board may grant a one-time, six-month extension. Two, this site plan approval may be revoked by the planning board if applicant violates the site plan approval or its condition during stages in any construction or alteration not authorized by the site plan approval. Three, any violation of the site plan approval or its condition shall be deemed a violation of the zoning code and shall be subject to enforcement. And to be in further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the town convenient clerk within five days. The date of this resolution shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. The foregoing resolution is voted on. All members of the planning board voting and signing as follows. Chairman Bucking?
Yes.
Pete Clare?
Yes.
Jonathan Anopoulos?
Yes.
Nathan Roy?
Yes.
Anthony Rostelli?
Yes.
Hold on, Eric, I'm just changing your name here. Eric, you didn't have to spell your last name.
M.C., capital E.
Mc, okay. Eric Mc...
Yes.
Bill Prober?
Yes. Want to say it or I'll send it to you? No. Okay. 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 So it's gonna matter to get the application together and then come back to us once you've got all that put together, and we'll go from there.
How would you be able to circulate the agency? Like, if we made modifications about the...
Do you require any other approvals, up and down approvals, from the town?
Water health approval?
County water health approval?
Yes.
Understand. Um, does that have to be building and planning work?
On the secretly nancy issue, is the school chartered or registered with the water regions in the state of New York? Yes, you are. So I believe that you're a type-two ash under secret because this would constitute a routine activity of education institution under 10,000 square feet, so you'd be exempt from secretly, so we don't need to be nancy.
Okay. I know that there was a comment in the engineer's comment letters saying that we're within 100 square feet of state road, so that's good, Dutchess County.
There'd be a county referral to the general school, right?
And then the zone board deals for a special... Special permit.
We can't do any of those referrals until you guys submit the rest of the materials that you want to submit. We need a kind of full package before we can send all that stuff off to the TDA.
Okay. I promise we'll make the changes and...
Okay.
Is there any other comments from the board?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Dan.
Seven rivers out, but I'm just passing through. Pass it down, please.
We're gonna need...
You need a...
You need two more?
I got that one there.
You need one more after that.
All right, I don't have any.
You need one more.
You wanna share right now, then? You wanna look at it?
I don't need it right now, but you said... Kyle, you folks ready, or...
Yeah.
This is for all of us to share?
Yes, the board has already one, so you don't have to...
That's yours?
Yeah.
That's mine, Norm, you already have one?
Yeah.
It's cool, shit.
Take one, pass it down, so...
I'll take one.
Oh, you need to take one.
Oh, yes.
Okay. One, I got one. Pile in the corner of my room now. Too many there. I don't know, three more there.
Everybody got one?
Okay. Okay.
Start everything structured right here.
Excuse me?
Getting everything handed out, but...
Thank you.
They also have a...
Yep, that's it. This last...
What's this one here?
You got one?
Yeah.
Computer wise. All right, you have what... You wanna present, or discuss at this point?
Uh, no, I think... I don't know if the planning board's aware of... The rest of the planning board's aware of what's happened over the last month, so I don't know if it might be a good idea to bring them up today and all that.
If you could, yeah. Plus, we got new member Eric McEnroe.
Okay.
If you folks can handle it.
So, when do we submit all the revised documents to the consultants?
July 3rd.
July 3rd? So, on July 3rd, we submitted the revised package, including all of the comments, back to all the consultants. Subsequently, we had a meeting with each one of the consultants and two planning board members at each meeting. The only consultants we did not get to meet was Dave Everett or George James. Meetings were very helpful. Essentially, we had minor clerical issues with each one of them. We're still waiting for comments on the memos, the technical memos that we submitted to Mary Ann Johnson with regards to the TND design and compliance with zoning. So, what we did is we sent her a... The word document with the idea that she would redline it and then get back to us, rather than us trying to interpret what she wanted. And so, at this point, the only comments that we're waiting for would be, I think, Julie Mangorillo with regards to the wastewater treatment plant drawings, and Dave Everett's comments.
Okay. Let's run it. Go ahead.
Well, I think George also indicated that he's looked at the visuals from a technical standpoint. He hasn't looked at it from a substantive standpoint, so he needs to provide, you know, comment memo on that, so that'd be another outstanding item.
What we're looking to try to do at this point is try to pull together next week where we can get the consultants to meet with myself, and I want to... I'd like to get at least two other planning board members to attend that meeting if we could, so that we can go over each consultant's comments, basically, and a few things that were outstanding to lock in as to whether we are complete and ready to go or not. Everybody's gonna be available to meet, and what I can... Yeah, George James can't meet, but he's gonna be... He'll be on speakerphone with us, so we can get that done next week. And at that point, we should have a pretty good handle as to where we are related to those comments. David and I have talked, and I think the best approach is gonna be to look at scheduling the public hearing for the beginning of September, our first meeting in September at this point. That's what we're looking at doing, in anticipation that we'll be able to complete the comment reviews in that timeframe. So it's gonna be critical that if there are outstanding issues that need to be posed up from the consultants, that, you know, they get done... They need to be done, really, by our next meeting on August, what's that, 17th or...
Yeah, right now, we have... Right now, we have all of the comments we've received today.
21st or next meeting, 21st, okay.
So, right now, all of the comments we've received today, we fixed all of those issues. They're pretty clerical in nature. I think, well, you know, the only caveat here is we haven't heard from David. I think Peter spoke to you, and he seems there's nothing major at the moment, and nothing that has come out.
What's that? I got the air...
Oh.
Flashing a major...
Okay. The... I believe you spoke to Peter Weiss, our attorney?
I did, yes.
Okay, and in our conversation with him, he said that you have yet to review everything, but there's nothing major that you have seen, so right now, nothing is...
Well, partly through my review when I was on vacation, I had some family issues and stuff in my... My plans are finished in the next two weeks, but I'm gonna be...
Is...
I don't know, but I ain't done it at this point.
Is there anything we can get in advance so that, to extend that we have to... That, to extend that we have to make any changes, we can provide those to the planning board as soon as possible for their review?
Yeah, if I find any major issues, I want to go through it, you know? I said I'm two, I said I'm two piece meal. But like I said, my overall expectation is that there's not gonna be anything there.
And then, one thing that we discussed with Mary Ann Johnson and Dr. Clemens was the design guidelines. And what we... They seem to be in agreement that if we bolster the design guidelines, that we go to the building inspector, we wouldn't need to submit our process of how we handle our design guidelines internally. So, I don't know if that's something that you would be okay with.
Well, that's one of the things that we need to talk about as a group, with the council consultants, and that's one of the reasons why we're gonna have this meeting next week, is to get everybody, you know, on the same page, back in style, you know, focused on trying to get this thing wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. But I also am not aware of what you guys discussed in meetings, and I think that's part of the reason we're gonna have this meeting, is that this is more...
So, what we'll do then, in order to... Because I think that was the only open item from our meetings, was, you know, the other thing we decided was to submit a redline just of the pages that we were making changes to. So, we'll try to provide you in... Ahead of the 14th, we'll try to provide you and the other consultants any changes that we foresee.
One of the other things that I think you guys should start thinking about is, and this is a really large project, as you know, and there's probably gonna be some field changes that you're gonna have to make after we've set up an approval.
Correct.
And I think more than the applicant really need to get an understanding of a process by which these field changes can occur. And, you know, there's have to be a process where they're gonna get viewed by somebody to say that they're major, maybe they gotta come back, or maybe they're on the minor, and, you know, they can just get approved by the building inspector or the board entity or something to that effect.
I think Amanda spoke to Julie about those things today. We do review all those changes normally with the RDC inspector, so to extend that we're making changes as we're building, because as we all know, you can plan as much as you can, but...
Yeah, exactly.
It just doesn't work the same way. So, we have been doing that, and what we normally have is we have a log of our plans at the maintenance field office, and in those plans, we have the changes associated with the as-built. And our plan is to provide the planning board as-built... As-built plans of everything we did out there.
So, I think we should just think about a procedure that you can follow and the town can follow, so we're all on the same page.
That'd be great.
That procedure would get approved by the planning board, you know, as part of the approval. I think I'm just throwing this idea out there, but...
No, that'd be great.
I think we're gonna have to deal with that at some point.
Yeah. I know John's expressed concern about that, how is it gonna work and how can he manage it? So I think a meeting with him would be helpful and help all the people together.
Yeah, we've been managing a lot with the DDC inspector, because as we're doing grading, as we're doing things, we gotta anticipate things that you can't anticipate on the plans.
Right.
So, he's been really good working with us and that. And he normally gets his ideas and stuff like that.
A process like that, where if you went through DCA, I'm sure if you go back to... You know, if we've gotten a agreed upon process, you go back to John and tell him all this discussed with DUC and just review, and I'm sure that's not any much of a problem.
Okay.
I mean, DUC's gonna rule on that anyways. Now, what we're looking at is...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What we're looking at is, you know, the 14th, having a consultants' meeting. That would give us a week until the next meeting, the 21st, to close everything up, to make sure that we're able to proceed with the public hearing at that point.
Okay.
If we can't have it closed up by the 21st, we'd have to hold off on the public hearing at that point.
Understood. Okay. The other thing I wanted to let the planning board know was, we did submit all of the responses to Julie Mangorillo with regards to the bath course work. So that was submitted a couple of weeks ago, I think, I believe. And, which included a memo in response to Dr. Clemens' comments, Julie's comments, and so forth.
Does she have a question about that? She wanted to know, from a priority standpoint, would you guys want it done first? Did you want the SPO amendment worked out by Julie first, or do you want her to review the water and sewer plans first?
I think the water and sewer first, because her comments to our SWIP were the same that we had done on the... It was just essentially applying the same to... That we did on the site plan to those, so it was pretty straight in nature. It wasn't not... It wasn't anything where you had designed, it was just clarification stuff, so that should be pretty straightforward. We also submitted a letter in which we CC'd the planning board and Julie and the DOT with our meeting with DOT, and we're set to submit the plans for their permit, I believe, tomorrow. Those plans should be going out.
Have there been any other further contact with DOT, or...
No. Essentially, we submitted that letter. Unfortunately, our engineer had some issues, and it took a little longer than expected, but we have not heard back from them. And the drawings, which is what I think the DOT really wanted to see, the whole package, should be going out to them shortly.
David and I talked earlier about the security agreement, the reclamation bond, and we talked about the past meetings. We need you folks to review that sometime in the next week.
As soon as we receive it, we'll be able to give it back.
Have you folks seen it at all yet? You haven't seen it?
We have not received the copy, no.
We need to get that to you, then we'll get that to you tomorrow. It's looking to be looked at.
Okay, so, you know, I was shocked by the town engineer not sending in to her comments we're in, so if you guys want to send it for...
By Julie?
No, by the town attorney.
Oh, town attorney.
By the town attorney?
Yeah, sorry.
Town attorney. So, if you guys want to send it without her comments, then you just need to talk to her about it.
Okay. I'll talk to her tomorrow, so I want to find out where we're at with that anyway, so...
I don't have any objection to sending it over to the S.A.L.O. with the reservation of rights that the town attorney's not looked at it, and she may want to have some comments and some changes on it.
Yeah, it'll probably be best to get the final document, the way we don't, you know, have our counsel review something and... David, when I talked earlier about the security agreement, the reclamation bond, and we talking about in past meetings, we need you folks to review that sometime in the next week.
As soon as we receive it, we'll be able to give it back.
Have you folks seen it at all yet? You haven't seen it?
We have not received the copy, no.
We need to get that to you, then we'll get that to you tomorrow, so I can be looked at.
Okay, so, you know, I was shocked by the town engineer not sending in some of her comments we're in, so if you guys wanna send it forward.
By Julie?
No, by the, the town attorney.
Oh, town attorney.
I'm sorry, it's the town engineer?
Yeah, it's alright.
Town attorney. So, if you guys wanted to send it without her comments, then you just need to talk to her about it.
Okay. I'll talk to Rachel tomorrow, so I wanna find out what we're at with that anyway, so.
I don't have any objection sending it over to Salo with the reservation of rights that the town attorney's not looked at it, and she may wanna have some comments and some changes on it.
Yeah, it'll probably be best to get the final document, the way we don't have our counsel review something, and that it's not final in nature.
I mean, I, I think the best approach from a scheduling standpoint is to try to get you guys to insert whatever comments that you have, I mean, the agreement's probably simple, straightforward, so...
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a lot of comments, but whatever comments you have, get that inputted, and so the town board can approve it at its next meeting on the 17th.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, we can move pretty quick on it, so as soon as we get it, we'll get it back to the board.
That's pretty much all I have on it.
And then, with regards to the subdivision plot, when should be we s...
You submitted that yet?
I don't know if we submitted a full one, yet, because I think they wanted to make sure that everything was set, rather than going and recording. So we submitted one with more details than before, but it doesn't have the whole legal portion, I believe.
Okay, so...
No?
So you did submit a preliminary flat?
We didn't submit the preliminary flat? Okay.
They wanna make sure that everything was set before they submit a preliminary flat? I know they're working on it, but it's, they have to, at the end of this week, eventually. They just wanna make sure that it's moving, maybe I wanna go ahead and start opening the preliminary flat, and have to take a full round. And I think the hope is to have a public hearing, and they're including the preliminary, so.
Yeah, we agree.
So, sooner you can get that in, the better, because something called public hearing, they will all fall off.
Okay, so we'll, we'll work on that.
There's nothing to change at this point, right?
Yeah, it's just, we did enough, there was, I think our only thing was... It's the sewer, really, and everything's on the ground, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't change, per se, the site plan.
Right.
It could change the subdivision documents, just because we have to, we have to provide an easement for those.
Everything?
Yeah.
But I think that's all we done, you know, keep whatever, but easements and stuff. But we need to get that platted, so town consultants can review that, and we can get a completed determination in the next two weeks.
But we did submit a preliminary one that included all of your comments with regards to adjoining lots, and having one lot versus two lots, and so forth, that we did include. So we'll try to get that to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, if you can get that to us, and, like I said before, the next thing, we're beginning to...
We'll, we'll try to get it to you before the 14th. That'll be our goal.
The other thing we gotta figure out, too, is where we should hold the meeting, I don't know if this room would be digging up, or... What's the date on that? For the 4th? Anybody have any, any ideas of where it should be held, or? The auditorium? You got an auditorium, any kind of confusion?
Okay. For the public hearing, I'm sorry, I'm beginning to sort of check, make sure that the jet is not taken by anybody that night.
We can't hear her, it's in my room?
Yep.
We're just gonna check and make sure it's not already taken by somebody for the 4th, the auditorium.
On the 4th, where?
Here, in the auditorium.
Okay.
And I guess we should, what's, what day of the week? Anybody have a preference? Weekend, weekday? But on the bathroom, big public hearing, we've had people ask to have them on weekends, because it's tough during the week for some people?
That'd be a good idea, I remember some of those things we did up at Salo, it was on a Saturday, and I, I think that would be better suited for people that are working during the week, so, so, I'd be for a Saturday. Saturday's fine, should I?
Saturday, the 6th?
It'd be... Auditorium?
I, I won't be here that weekend.
The rest of the public hearing. What's that?
I can't either, so.
But if that's what works, then I'll see what works.
Maybe we should just leave it to 4th?
Well, you can leave it on 4th, and then hold a little bit, and you can time to break comments.
Yeah, we gotta do that, no?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you in?
Alright, so we'll just hold it for 4th.
Do we need a scenographer for the public hearing?
No, we've had him in the past.
We have had him in the past, and it's really, I think it's up to you guys.
I know, it's, it's, it's different than a public hearing during the secret process, where we have to respond to all the, but I, it might be good just to have him, just so that if the planning board wants to address some of them, or so forth, we have him in writing.
We can do that.
Okay. So I'll, I'll ask Julie, Julia, Amanda, about trying to schedule one.
Should we schedule it?
Yeah.
Anything else to figure out?
No, that's...
That's it?
What is this that we just received, the avoidance monitoring and an anticipated discovery plan? Just in brief, what is that?
Could you get, like, could you get the top of it?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but...
Yeah, so one is for the cultural resources area.
Uh huh.
It includes both the study done on archaeological sites on, or a study done on the lower piece by the Harlem Valley landfill corporation, as well as the closing, the, the, closing shipo for the 670 acres.
Okay.
So there's an avoidance plan that we are proposing for the area close to the silos.
Okay, for the archaeological site, sure.
So that's, like, I guess what this is. And then the, the balance is the survey, which was, both of these were sent to shipo. We should be hearing back from them within the next 30 days.
Okay.
In the last part, just for the, as far as the board goes, for the 21st, when the consults meeting, 14th, I'm anticipating that things will be pretty much packaged and ready to go, but there may be some points where, some issues that aren't resolved, but we may sit down with the board, take a look at, and make decisions relating to how to proceed with those particular problems, if they are problems, or whatever it might be. So, it's gonna be real important on the 21st, that we get, you know, we're grouped together, grouped formed together, and...
We want everybody to be here.
And try to get those things resolved at that point, if we can, if we can, we may not be able to, but we're gonna, that's the goal, though.
Kevin, just to keep in mind, if the public hearing is sent out to the public, you don't have to have all of the issues solved. If you want to, that's fine, but the reason that you sent it out to the public is you made a determination, and it's complete, so the public can, you know, accurately, adequately understand the project, and all the documents, and I think there's an acknowledgement and recognition on projects this size, but you're not gonna have all of those issues, you know, I mean, that's what you basically go to your deliberation to do.
And that may be the decision that's made at that time. What I'm looking at is, just wanna get some kind of confirmation from the board, as to, with big issues, if there are any big outstanding issues, if a particular consultant has a problem, and a major part of it, then, you know, we, you know, we know how to go with it, if we're gonna be following the consultant's guides, guidelines, or if we wanna go a different way, or, you know, exactly what it is we wanna do.
Plus, we wanna hear from the public, so it's always better hearing from the public, like we always do, makes it easier, get more information.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will just add one thing, as a planning, to the planning board members, if you haven't had the opportunity to go up there and get a site visit, I would suggest that you do so, because you can call Mike up or Pedro, or if you wanna call me up, I'll give you Mike's number, and put you in touch, 'cause I did it a couple of weeks ago, and he gave me a complete tour of everything that they're doing, what they're gonna be doing, and this is what this is gonna be over here, and so, and it was really, it was very beneficial to see how everything was really gonna be laid out, and have that visual of it, too, it was, it was, it was good, so, if you haven't done that, try and do that in the next couple of weeks, oh, he'll do it anytime for you, so.
Yeah, we started grassing the first hole, which is looking great, hole 11, so that's looking good. We'll be grassing 16 next week, 17 next week as well, and hopefully, a week after, we start getting into 18 and 10, and the driving range, we'll start grassing the outer areas as well.
What type of grass is typical?
So they're using bluegrass on the out-of-play areas, they're also using fescue grasses, and then there's for the, for the fairway, they use bentgrass. And then there's a different bentgrass between the fairway and the, and the, the green. But it's been fascinating watching, you know, the whole process, it's pretty intricate, I must, I must take. Thank you.
Thanks, Pedro.
You're welcome. Is there anybody here from Camerac?
They were, if they were coming, not, so, but I do have some information for...
I thought camera?
I was reading some of the notes on Camerac, it was Julie, the complete lighting up there, not just from relations to...
Oh, that's the, the GBA.
Oh, that was his GBA memo?
That's where those came from.
I heard that you, like, you used two file copies, and what Julie said about the GBA, and also, your comments.
So actually, Camerac wants to go ahead and discover for a public hearing also. Can imagine doing a public hearing the same day as we do on Silo.
Well, are they that close to being ready for a public comment?
I think they are, yeah, I think they are at this point, yeah.
Yeah.
What's your opinion on that, Dave?
Okay, you just sent it out for a public hearing, you're in a meeting.
Have we got time with the third day? 10 days?
You're supposed to, you're supposed, the law says, you gotta, probably, there's a meeting, questions getting papers in their time deadlines, it's not...
Yeah, we're signed up.
I, I can do it, yeah, everything considered, I agree with that, it should be fine. All the paper and certificates have already been printed out, all the letters, just the only thing it has to do is, the letter just has to go out, the public notice letter has to be written up, sent out by Monday.
But they haven't got all this, everything in at this point.
Well, that's, Julie's comments are exactly what's left.
But they don't have the Sony report yet, right?
They don't have it yet, but it was said to them, to know Arnold Pools, but they don't have the report in their hand yet.
Yeah, I thought Julie was okay with setting down for a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, she was, no, she did say that, yeah. Basically, they're in everything being contained in completion of the work.
So, so potentially the 21st, you're thinking, right?
Yeah, the 21st, yeah.
Yeah, you, yeah, you wanna do them all together, so.
I would do that, huh?
I don't have one, no.
Do you want anyone to discover it on the 21st?
I have a question, man, you did send out a couple of emails, what was the upshot of the dialogue with the GBA?
GBA was asking for, it was a little confusing, it sounded like they were talking about, they wanted a waiver from submitting for the existing lighting, but we had asked for the existing lighting to be submitted, so we know what's gonna happen there. They did agree with granting a waiver for the, not the existing, for new lighting, they're giving a waiver for the existing lighting, because you can't see it from the road, you know, it's not visible at all, never has been, so we don't have to worry about what's already there. And what's already there is quite a bit further in the woods, and back than what the, you probably had this.
So they agreed that the proposed is the only one they're concerned about?
Yes, and they want a, a lighting plan for that, they wanna see that.
Which we were asking for anyway.
We were.
And AP wasn't.
Oh, we are asking for it.
But ready was our, you know.
No.
Big pros.
What's that?
It's a big pros.
Yeah.
Whatever you have.
And what about the Department of Health approval, if she's coming around now? They hadn't been obtained yet either, right?
I gave her an email that listed everything that she was...
Yeah, I gotta read, yeah. That's not done yet, but... Alright, so do you continue on that also? Alright.
So what happens if DeBrazia Moore actually responds? Or, did you take motion for a public hearing for them also?
Yeah, I mean, if we've got time to cement circulate time, but if we don't, we'll have to wait.
That's a line adjustment?
Yeah, they haven't responded back to the, we received a couple of messages, we're ready to go, but they haven't responded back, so. Yeah, the GBA is concerned the planning board should not allow a waiver for lighting with the current project. The board felt there was an important issue, needed to be documented, the proposed lighting seemed to only consist of wall mounted fixtures on the cabin, so there was not much to document, basically saying there's not a whole lot there, so we're gonna have them document it, not a big deal.
So have you asked them to document the lighting, or are you gonna give them a waiver?
No, we're gonna ask them to document the lighting.
You're asking them?
For the current project, yes, not for the, not for the old, what's already there, to adjust it.
Here, we got a lot of stuff moving forward, then.
Yeah.
So, so the 21st for these guys, yeah, and then hopefully the 4th.
For the Silo?
Yeah.
We got the 14th, does anybody know that they can be there, would wanna attend, attend the 14th meeting with the consultants?
I'm not gonna be there.
I, I can do it.
I can't, I can't. Alright, so there you go, we got our...
We can take one more, if anybody else wants, we've got room for one more.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be here.
Whereabouts is it?
Here.
What time?
Uh, 10 o'clock, on the floor.
Thursday?
Yeah, next Thursday?
Okay.
Okay, last name was the approval of the minutes, if you want to move on to the other.
Yeah.
Everyone have the opportunity to review the minutes I sent out?
Yes.
Get a motion to approve the minutes for the July 3rd and July 17th?
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah? Get a motion to close the meeting?
Make that motion.
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.